Two thirty five first, Clinton Board of Alderman Meeting. If you didn't tune in for our swearing game ceremony we just had, you might notice that I made new faces than the one you're used to seeing up here for the past twelve years or so. My name is Mayor Will Purdy. I'm excited to be your new mayor. This is the start of a new term. And I'll speak to the board when I say we are very excited to get to work for the citizens of Clinton and do good work for the citizens of Clinton. So we will begin that now. We have Alderman Robert Chapman who's going to lead our invocation this evening, and Alderman Woman Karen Godfrey is going to lead the pledge for us.
Just mark your heads with me, please. Dear Lord, we humbly approach you and we thank you for getting us here safely on such a rainy night. We pray for those that are dealing with the outcomes of the storm. We pray that you are with the first responders across our city and across our county and our state and nation. Lord, we thank you for allowing us the opportunity to serve this city, and I pray that you will impress upon our hearts that this is an act of service, and that is what we are humbly called to do. Let us move in your name as we make the decisions for this city. In your name I pray, amen.
Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Moving to item seven, we will have a department head report from Director of Parks and Recreation, Courtney Nun.
Good evening, new mayor and board. I'm excited to have y'all and work with y'all for the next term. I always enjoy coming up here to let y'all know about the, you know, what we've got going on at Parks and Recreation. Do we have a...
It's just... She's... Oh. Yeah, see that one? That's so sad. Y'all should know.
Is it going to come up or is it not working too? That's the big question. Is it going to come up or is it...
It's going to. It's eighty percent loaded. She's got lots of animations and video games there.
It's a small... It's a small...
It's almost there. You start talking about it and it'll pop up.
But it's so many good things to see though. Is it possible to wait till after the ice?
I mean, we can take it out for a little bit. That's fine. We'll come back and get it. Why don't you, let's go out of order because you've got an item on the agenda tonight. Item eight, I, discussion action, which will be approval for the mayor to execute a degree with NR Tennis LLC for tennis services at Brighton Park. May I go first? Go take it for this one.
Good deal. Well, this is nothing to show you here. You should have been able to look over the usage agreement as we discussed last night. This is something that has been needed for a while, tennis services at Brighton Park. As you know, currently, I am running any kind of tennis services all the way from Traceway Park. Any court rentals are having to come all the way across town to Traceway to do a court rental. So this will allow us to have somebody onsite to be able to teach clinics, do leagues, run tournaments, whatever tennis may need, they're going to be over there to take care of it. This will be an independent contractor coming in and taking care of the services over there. They will have an online scheduling system to where people can go on at any time and reserve a court. So that's kind of the, I guess, the overview of everything. It's been a long time coming. I do feel like this is a good direction for tennis, and hopefully, if we can blow this thing up, we have some land over there, ready to build some new tennis courts, and maybe even add some pickleball courts on that side of town as well. So...
So this agreement that we're getting in is one that gets the ball rolling. We will later on determine these, if any, and kind of use the expertise of individual from a previous experience to then kind of set the rules moving forward.
Right, right. And this individual is coming from the Georgia area, has been both on the competitive side, coaching collegiately, and then on the recreation side, working for a city over there in Georgia. So they've kind of seen a little bit of everything, worked with all ages, and they're ready to come in and just get it rocking and rolling over there, so.
I appreciate this because it's at Brighton Park and Ward five, Courtney and I, son, that you've done the major part, have been working. She has checked, I don't know how many people out. We have collaborated in trying to call and some people who play tennis and, you know, any ideas, that kind of stuff. So I do appreciate all your hard work. We got the tennis courts covered and resurfaced, and it is ready to go.
Absolutely.
But thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to approve them.
A second. All those in favor? Aye. That's good.
Thank you.
All right, it looks like maybe we are up now.
Okay. There you go.
It's better be good.
No, no, it'll be great. It'll be great. Awesome. There we go. There we go. So of course, like I said, while we go, you know, Clinton Parks and Recreation, this is something that I'm very passionate about, especially here in Clinton. And there's so much to brag about when I'm able to come up here. So it's hard to choose and narrow everything down to just a few slides. So just to start off, we'll start out big with the Red, White, and Blue Fest. Made sure to dress the part tonight, but we're excited for that. We've been getting ready for that for about, I would say, a month now, just kind of getting everything cleaned up, especially with all the construction happening. So there's just a lot to look forward to. A few things. Gates open at four o'clock. There's a ten dollar parking fee. Right now, we're accepting cash only, but hopefully, you know, in the next forty-eight hours, maybe I can get something figured out. But no pets allowed, small coolers only. We'll have the fun zone opening at four, once everybody starts rolling in. The fun zone will have inflatables, we'll have some cornhole, as well as some, I want to call it cornhole tic-tac-toe. We'll call it that. So it'll be really fun. We'll have some soccer happening on Field Nine with some of the Mighty Michaels, and then we'll have food vendors. We've got Madios, Copland's Barbecue, we've got Dad's Dogs, and then on the more sweeter side, we've got Lucy's Lemonade, and then Snow Biz, and then we've got Brick Street Pops. So we've got a good little lineup there. We've got several volunteers coming from Brea Crown Club, we've got a few from Jackson State coming in to help fill some of those holes and get things done. So I'm grateful for those volunteers, sponsors. We've had a great, great support with sponsors this year. I would like to name a few, if you guys don't mind. All right. So starting off, we had two donations, just, I would say, just a donation from the family of William Jeter. We had a donation from Tenon Construction. Under the community level sponsorships, we had Richardson Athletics, One Way Promo, Site One, Chick-fil-A, Los Perriereros, State Farm with Tim Russ, Mississippi College, the Draven Family, and Devini Equipment. Under the Star sponsorship, we had Clinton Refrigeration, Clinton Soccer Association, Canizero Coffin and Davis, Scoggins, Rotolo, Cadence Bank, Methodist Rehabilitation, and Musco Lighting, Alpha Insurance. And then we had a, I applied for a micro grant through Entergy to ask if they would like to be a sponsor, and they approved that for a thousand dollars. So we were able to add that to it. Next is a partial fun zone sponsorship by Continental, and then Mayor's Tent was sponsored by Performance Therapy, and then our big stage sponsor was Path Company. And so it's been pretty great this year. It's been pretty exciting to have that many supporters under the sponsorships. So I do appreciate those, and I just want to kind of thank those businesses and those people for supporting this event. Let's see. And then next would be my Parks and Rec staff. You know, I just kind of wanted to recognize them as they're out there, day in and day out, working to get ready for this. They want it just as great as I do, and, you know, we want to make sure that we make the city proud and put on a great event. Volunteers, I mentioned those, and then Supporting Departments. We've got so many different people helping in the other departments that are making this a great event. So thank you to those people. Starting out the night, we're going to have Kira's against the grain at five forty-five. He is actually the brother of our headliner, who will go on at seven fifteen, Jerika Singleton. So we're excited about those two. I know they'll put on a great show for us. So make sure you come out and come listen to some great music. And then at the end of the night, we'll have the fireworks show at nine p.m. This is some cool drone footage done by the Police Department. This is kind of an oversight of, I'm not sure which direction this is looking, but you can kind of see, it's either looking towards Arrow Drive or towards North Side. So I thought it was a pretty cool shot for y'all to see. Going into some updates with the two percent, phase one project update. Of course, you know, to begin with, there was a playground complete at Brighton Park. Several of you were able to attend that. It's been pretty busy over there, and the pavilion rentals have skyrocketed, so that's a good thing. Seems like people are enjoying it. With this install, we made sure that we had space to add to it and to grow it, and then hopefully, in this next year, we'll be able to put some fencing around it to make it a little bit safer for kids running around. Over at Traceway Park, we've got softball five and six restrooms being built. That is a look from the restrooms looking towards the foreplex. This will be the small version of our park restrooms moving forward. This is baseball ten restrooms. This will be the medium version. If we ever need parks, you know, we'll be able to just pull what size we need, and we've already got the plans for it. And then, of course, probably the most exciting is our pickleball complex. If you drove down Vicksburg Road, Old Hixburg Road lately, you can kind of see the progress happening there. They started doing some sidewalks, now they're working on the right side going down. They ran into a few issues with drainage, and so they're kind of building up with some dirt to try to make sure that that's going to be good for some sidewalks running on the right side. So it's getting pretty exciting out there, and I'm ready to get rid of those porta potties. All right. So the athletic field lighting at Traceway Park, that's something that's pretty exciting. I've told our contractors several times, like, I've loved having y'all here, but it's time for y'all to go. It's time for y'all to go. So just to remind you guys, twenty-four athletic fields, seventy poles, five hundred and seventy-five light fixtures, and then you can kind of see the breakdown for both sides. And our anticipated completion date is July fourth, and they're on track. If you haven't noticed, they've been working late nights out there. I know they were out there till about eleven, eleven the other night, just trying to work as hard as they can to get us to July fourth. So they've done a wonderful job. This is a picture probably, I would say, about a year or so ago. It was a night for a baseball tournament, so you can kind of see all the glare and all the light pollution from where this is. And then this is, I believe, last night. So you can kind of see it's going to take a lot, I would say, from the light pollution in the sky. You won't, I'd say you won't be able to tell if field light is on or what field it is until you actually get to the field. So it's going to look a ton better. This is only half of the lights on right now, seeing that, but it's pretty beautiful. Gets me excited, so. And then last but not least, as part of being members of the National Recreation and Parks Association, you know, they celebrate Parks and Rec Month every July, and so we are going to be celebrating Parks and Rec this month with them, just kind of focusing on what Parks and Rec is for the community, how important it is, and as well as focusing on what my guys essentially do out there for parks. We've got several businesses that just want to show love to them, that we've already got lined up, so that's exciting, and I appreciate them for doing that. But I could not do what I do without my guys. They mean a lot to me, just as people, but also just as employees to the city. So I do all I can to try to keep them because they are an important part for us. So join us in the celebration there. Any questions? That was worth it. That was worth it. Should I start over?
I know that associations are really excited about the lights, even so that the Football Association has extended signups.
That's a good one. The Clinton Youth Football Association has extended flag football registration, so if you have any questions, email me after the board. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now we will move back to item eight, discussion action items. We will go through item eight A, adoption of existing policies and procedures. Our city clerk, Mary Farquhar, will discuss this.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is just a, one of the housekeeping items here. These first five or six items we have are kind of statutory items, opportunity for the new board to establish itself and to kind of set the ground rules as how we're going to go forward. This first item is one that came up. It's an opportunity for you guys to basically adopt and affirm the rules that we already have in place that we're operating under as a city, the ordinances, the rules, the procedures, the day-to-day policies that we operate under. So I'd like to ask for a motion on that.
Move to approve.
Second. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. All right, item eight B is going to be the option of a procedural ordinance. I'll discuss that. I've been talking with some of the board, it's been expressed by some board members that, you know, they would like to see some more order and definition to some of our meetings. Most cities do have procedural ordinance, Clinton never has. So that's what this ordinance is. It will set the rules and the regulations by which we conduct public meetings and work sessions, decides where and when they'll be held, the order they'll be conducted in, and how they will be conducted. So we talked a little bit about this last night, turn that will open for discussion to the board or ask for a motion.
Move to approve. Second.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. All right, item eight C, appointment of department heads and statutory officers. I'm going to go through this one as well. At the start of every term, the board and the city is required to reappoint or appoint all department heads or reappoint all department heads. We will go through these each individually. We'll try and do them quickly. I will say, we've got a great set of department heads. Unequivocally recommend the reappointment of everybody on this list and the appointment of everybody we will come to. So I won't say anything about them individually, except that I have the utmost confidence all of them and look forward to working with them this term, should the board appoint them. So first, we have Jimmy Baldrick, the city clerk, to have a motion to reappoint Jimmy Baldrick.
Move to reappoint.
Second.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes. Jimmy, I've got the list of motions. Actually, you're keeping it over there. Are you going to keep it?
Trying to.
Okay.
We'll get off the videos if we have to.
Okay. The next appointment we would have is Ford Hayman, who would be appointed Chief of Police.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. The next appointment will be Philip Lilly as the Director of Public Works. Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. The next appointment would be for Williford Gerhardt and Knight, to serve as city engineers.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. The next appointment will be for Roy Edwards, to serve as Director of Community Development.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. The next appointment is for Courtney Nun as the Director of Parks and Recreation.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. The next appointment is for Chandra Fontenot, the Director, who would be the Director of Therapeutic Recreation.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. Marcia Borum as the Visitor Center Director. Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. The next appointment is for Tara Lidle as the Director of Main Street.
Move to approve.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. Next is for Marley Price as Director of Communications.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor? All those opposed? The next is for Kevin Runlet, to serve as City Prosecutor.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. And then we have Graham Corner to serve as the Public Defender.
Move to approve. Second.
All right, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. All right, now to the, a couple of new faces or new positions. First, replacing myself, the city attorney, I've recommended to the board, and they met with this gentleman last night, Desiree Burns. Again, I won't, we've talked about it last night, so I won't belabor the point, except to say I have confidence and recommend Desiree for the position.
Move to approve. Second.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. All right, next, one I'm excited about, now we've got a crowd here for tonight. As some of you may know, our outgoing fire chief, I believe, also is here tonight, who got out, and I don't think we forgot how he got out of your last deployment, Ed Ford. You might have to leave this, might have to let you make a guest appearance at some point, but I guess I've left the cat in the bag. I would like to recommend Leigis Buckley for the position of Fire Chief.
Move to approve. Second.
There was too many. Jimmy, that's on you. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. And then lastly, we have a new position here, one that I'm also excited about, to come on board, is my Chief of Staff. Many of you may know Brianna Norton, she's a Clinton native, long time Clinton resident. She's going to come back, and I think she'll be a great addition to the team here, so I would ask for a motion for that.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. All right, I think that is all of those for now, so we will move on to the next agenda item, which is agenda item eight D, excuse me, election of Mayor Pro Tem, Jimmy Baldrick and his court, but this one's what...
Again, this is another one of the housekeeping items here. As a new board, it is a statutory requirement that you elect from amongst your members a Mayor Pro Tem who is entitled to step in in case of absence of the Mayor or inability for him to be here to perform the duties of a Mayor in an emergency-type situation. So seeking a nomination, I would let you know that historically, that has been the alderman in large, as their citywide elected official, like the Mayor is as well, so.
I move to nominate Robert Chapman.
Second.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. All right, item eight E, update to the resolution authorizing the use of financial institution between Bank Plus and the City of Clinton. Our city clerk will do this one as well.
All right, Mayor, thank you. As a new board as well, as we have a new mayor, we have to change the signatures, the banks that hold our funds before we can disperse any kind of funds, we have to have signature authority on there, and we have to update that with the Mayor, the Mayor Pro Tem, myself, and then my deputy clerks. So we are just amending the existing agreement we have with Bank Plus to change those names to the current.
Move to approve. Second.
All right, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. All right, item eight G, appointment of representatives to the Clinton Raymond Bolton Wastewater Authority Board. Jimmy, handle this one as well.
Yes, sir. This is the board of the authority that's actually working on the Big Black River Project, the sewer project that we're in the middle of. As you're aware, it's going to be an ongoing project that goes on for a number of years. As part of our membership agreement and the bylaws there, they require, as a new term takes place on the Board of Aldermen, that you also reappoint representatives to that board. The City of Clinton, being the majority stakeholder in this endeavor, is entitled to four seats, and we presented four names for you. We have Mark Bailey, who's the current President of the Board. Sorry.
Rodney Harris.
Rodney Harris is the current Vice President, and then Philip Lilly is our Public Works Director, who's definitely hands-on on this project. And then we'd like to add the Mayor, Mayor Purdy, to replace Mayor Fisher.
Move to approve. Second.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. Well, it would be bad luck to not mess up at least once, or at least that's what I'm going to tell myself, so I skipped one. I'm going to go back to item eight F, appointment of NML 2025 voting delegates. Jimmy, if you'll handle this one.
Yes, sir. We have an annual convention each year on the coast for members of the board and the elected officials and city officials throughout the state all get together, and there's a number of breakout sessions, there's a number of vendors and various things there that represent, again, across the state of Mississippi. Each year, there's an election for the second Vice President, who will eventually bubble up to become the President of that organization, and this year, we're asking that Mayor Purdy be elected as the first representative, and I believe it's Alderman Godfrey as an alternative. I'd like a motion for that, please.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. Item eight H, we'll give Jimmy a little break here and bring Ford Hayman up to this one. This is approval for CPD to accept a hundred dollar donation from TK Saul, and then Rick George Saul.
Yeah, Mayor, Board, congratulations to each of you. Couple of months ago, TK, if y'all know Coach, he lost his brother George, and at some point, forgive me, in his career, George was a police officer, and had a deep appreciation for the Clinton Police Department. So we're thankful for TK to give us a hundred dollar donation in George's memory, so I asked for y'all to accept that.
Move to approve. Second.
All those opposed? All those opposed? Motion passes. Item eight J, certificate of appropriateness for Mike and Trish Ballard at 207 West Main Street. Roy Edwards, our Director of Community Development, will take a seat. And do we have anybody here that speaks for this?
So Mike. Mike Ballard is here. Thank you, Mayor, Board. Mike and Trish Ballard are seeking a certificate of appropriateness to install a fence along the front property line of their home. This is the location. It's on that 207 West Main Street. This is the area of it. You see the white line there is where they're wanting to run the fence. Their first choice is for a wrought iron decorative fence, I believe, there it is, on there. If they can't find one that they want, they would like to go ahead and be approved for a white picket fence to go on there. And of course, there are some in Old Town Clinton. Our ordinance does allow for a decorative fence in the Old Town Clinton area. Normally, we don't allow fences in the front yards, but that is an exception in the Old Town Clinton District. Section twenty- Uh, Section 22207 gives you the purpose and right to you for granting, uh, these certificates. The Historic Preservation Committee and the Planning Commission have recommended approval, ask them.
Any discussion or? May I have two prays? All right, Mike, is anything you wanna add?
No, sir, that was enough.
Second.
All right, motion for second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item Eight K, also a certificate of appropriateness for Tab Hadaway at 100 Delmont Street. Mr. Hadaway, anybody else here speak on this?
Okay, Tab has, uh, asked, uh, for a certificate of appropriateness, uh, to remove the silos and, uh, elevators, uh, from this location. You recognize it as the, uh, Johnson Mill. The, uh, uh, we've having trouble, his insurance company has, uh, uh, said this is a liability to them, we've got different debris, and I'll show you here in just a moment, but, uh, but they're looking to remove is the, uh, top part of that building, the elevators, the, uh, uh, and then the silos that go down the side, all of what you're looking at here, except for the main building. Uh, and then, of course, the, uh, conveyors and the, uh, silos, uh, there at that location as well. And again, this is, uh, since it's in the Old Town Clinton District, any demolition or changes like this, I have to go before the Board. You see, uh, there's the left in the circle is one of the elevators, it's already started to buckle. And if you look up, uh, to the right, there are two different locations, some of the debris that's already starting to fall on it. And, uh, quite frankly, I do think it, uh, presents a, uh, uh, nuisance, uh, to, a, uh, attractive nuisance for kids and others around, uh, there. So he's asking for a certificate of appropriateness, uh, to go ahead and demolish this part.
So all of it will be demolished, everything that's there?
No, just the elevators, uh, pretty much what you see.
Like the, the stairwell?
The, uh, he'll leave the stairs on the actual buildings that stay, but, uh, where you see them going up the elevator, all of this will come down, uh, all of this area up here will come down. But now, the buildings themselves will be left there.
Okay, the silos?
The silos are coming down as well, yes, ma'am.
Sorry, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Uh, just like you said, it's a safety and a liability issue, uh, seems like a few times a year, there's always somebody that's trying to hop the fence and wants to climb up there, um, as well as just wanting to make it more attractive, uh, for potential future developers.
Can you go back to the, the Fisher room, show them the floor?
From the front.
The, the three, the, the, the rounds that they're selling?
The silos are, yes, ma'am.
And that's a hazard, a landmark, so. I'm, I'm sad about that.
Well, I think while he's taking down the elevators and things like that, he wants to go ahead and clean up the rest that, uh, that is there. I'm not aware of, like, anything on the silos themselves, uh, any parts, uh, coming off of it. It's, uh, I know the, uh, uh, elevators, like you saw, the budging, uh, there of, uh, one of them, and then also the debris falling, uh, from up higher.
And you mentioned planning for development or whatever, is already planned on selling that, or?
Not to, to the Board.
No.
But, like, I'm, I'm with you that I like, I like the, I mean, I like the historical aspect, but without the rest of that on it, is it just a bunch of brown stacks standing next to each other, does that make sense? Again, if we don't have the rest of it, it makes it look like a mill, does it just look like?
We need to call Chip and Joanna.
Yeah. Yes, I hate that. Um, in planning is, I mean, there was a question asked about reviewing the Supreme Court ruling, uh, for, uh, for, um.
Imminent domain? Yes, ma'am, the, uh, that was brought up, uh, by someone, I've looked, uh, through, have not seen anything, uh, there. Uh, since, uh, that ruling was made, and since the, uh, urban development that had taken place, uh, on there, we have, the algorithm on has come down. That's what, not to help them up for any of that. A part of the, uh, urban development plan was for the removal of things that, you know, present themselves as a, uh, uh, a nuisance, uh, attractive nuisance, uh, on there or just to redevelop.
Do we know when those were constructed or placed there?
Uh, did not get the years, uh, on land. No.
Can you just do the elevators and stairs and let us see how it works? Without all that?
It's a start. I would have to speak with the others, I'm not sure how far you went.
So it does not have historic significance?
It is, it is, uh, part of the, uh, of our contributing resources on there, like so many other buildings in the city that, uh, have been changed or removed things, uh, along those lines, uh. We have, uh, lost several over the years, uh, the, the building itself will still be there, it's over fifty years old, so it'd still be, this one would still be a contributing resource. That is part of the, uh, of what made it a contributing resource, but I don't think that would, that'd take it off, uh, uh, the list for, uh, National Register.
And if the reason they wanna take down is a liability of people, that's, that's a safety thing, does that put them and the city at any risk if they don't do anything? I, I, I imagine it's a legitimate risk as a property owner, but then as, would, would we incur anything because of a historical nature? Because we're trying to keep it, I, I, I like it, I think it adds some character, but I also understand the, the dangers, and then if you're taking down portions of it, if the silos was there, does, does the silo show any historical significance without the rest of it?
Yeah, I mean, I got, I got kinda walked by lines, I'm no longer sure if I'm supposed to give leave or pass the city anymore, but, uh, and, and we, we've hired a new City Attorney, but he hadn't started yet. Happy to look at it. Yeah, certainly, uh, uh, liability exists for a crumbling structure of the complex, I would say, uh, you know, where and who that's a portion to, it's generally gonna be a fact specific question, um, but, yeah, I mean, if pieces are falling off of it, then we don't allow support, but if mitigation for that, that would concern me. If, you know, if there's somebody that's looked at silos specifically about the soundness of the stability of that?
Silos themselves, no, but everything above them, it seems like every time there's a, a big storm, if you're in the warehouse, you can hear pieces of it break off and hit them in the roof, and that's not good.
Yeah, I mean, I can see the stairway and all the tall stuff that's over there that looks like parts are falling off, but the silos themselves seem like they are a landmark in Clinton, they have been here for so long, I just hate to see them gone.
Me too.
Is it, uh, I would just suggest that we approve everything but the silos and table that portion of it, and maybe we could just have somebody look and see if there's some sort of structural integrity issue there or, or something that would be more of a concern, or that there's any future hope for them to do something, and, and let's just table that part of it, if that's okay.
I second that.
I agree.
So, so motion on table approved, the certificate of appropriateness with everything they requested, except the silos.
Silos, yes.
And table that portion of it, uh, because I'm not, uh, you know, if somebody says they're unredeemable or something that, you know, then that's, but without having somebody look at that, I think, do we at least take a little time to make sure that's true? If, if we table it, our tip is basically we come up with the next Board meeting, would that give you guys enough time to at least start looking at, at silos and?
I, I would assume so, uh, when with the next Board? Two weeks.
Two weeks, uh, and if it's not, I mean, you can contact the Board, we can kind of get you back on for a little time if you're ready with that.
Uh, yeah, uh, my boss will be back in seven or another week, uh, but I, he might be able to, and if not, you can contact the Board, like you said.
And we could go for another four weeks, at the next one, have a, at the work session, have a discussion about it at that.
Yeah, my sister, ma'am, if we think you'd like to kind of talk with the Board, I'm sure the Board will discuss it with them, because they might be available at the next, uh, work session we have. All right, so we have a motion and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Item Eight L is a certificate of appropriateness for Dave Riley, 102 West Main Street. Mr. Roy Edwards will take this one as well.
Uh, Mr. Riley is here. And he is seeking a certificate of appropriateness, uh, to remove, uh, four trees, uh, that are measuring over the twelve inch, uh, at the, uh, five foot height, uh, measurement on that. This is the location, it's directly behind us here, the apartments, uh, we've asked him to, uh, replace the fence there that's in, in bad shape. So what, uh, um, in order to do it, some of these trees have got to go, the top there, you see one tree that's, uh, twelve, uh, inches in diameter, that's one between here and the Police Department. Uh, here, uh, on the southwest corner of it is, are three other trees, uh, that are, are right next to the building, and you'll see that, uh, at least one of them is, uh, pretty well dead. This is one between the Police Department and, uh, the apartments, and then these are the three on the corner.
May I have two prays?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Can I ask a question, is that back up to the, behind the dumpsters?
Yes.
Is, and our plan is for the city to put a fence, that, if they're gonna put a new fence, then we need to add.
Oh, to cut to, to close the dumpster?
Yes, it gets attached, yeah, it take off what Dave's doing, and then add to, we can add to it and just enclose the dumpsters.
There's someone who's called about the dumpster, uh, just today, uh, asking about what we could, uh, prepare with.
Item Eight M is a conditional use for Zayo Group slash Rex Atkinson, 2010 North Frontage Road.
Okay, they are seeking a conditional use to expand a previously, uh, approved, uh, conditional use. The, uh, they're seeking to add, uh, two more of the precast buildings to the rear of the, uh, existing. This is the location, along the north frontage, uh, they're leasing at, uh, currently a one hundred by one hundred, uh, uh, foot track there. This is your area of it, that in the yellow is, uh, what they have now with the, uh, uh, and this is, uh, this building houses electrical telecommunications equipment, providing the fiber optic lines a signal regeneration. Uh, that's the location now, and then in red would be the additional, it's a seventy-six by eighty-five, uh, foot, uh, uh, addition to it, that'll hold two more of the precast buildings. This is, uh, the precast building. This is, uh, heading, uh, west, uh, on North Frontage, uh, looking into the property, you can see, uh, a little bit of the, uh, uh, building there, and, uh, the, what they're wanting to do would go behind, uh, this. This is, uh, getting closer to the, uh, directly in front of it. And again, it'll be behind this fenced-in enclosure now. Uh, this is, as I passed it, that's the road going up to it, the, uh, to the left there is the owner of the property's barn that he has built there, but to the right is the, uh, uh, existing building, you see a little of the fence, and then the tree line behind it is where, uh, the, uh, next two would go. And this is, uh.
So what's the zoning?
The zoning is A1.
A1.
Yes.
And that, that, that building fits in that?
It does, this is as a conditional use, uh, the, uh, uh, it was approved, uh, for the first building, and now they're just wanting to expand it, it's gonna take a little more equipment than they originally anticipated, uh, when they put it there.
Those trees be cut that are there, I mean, would you be able to see all of them?
The grade goes down, uh, there as you can see, on it, uh, I'm not gonna say you wouldn't be able to see some portion of it, even with the fence there now, uh, you'll see the top of the building if you look real close there, and of course, there's trees along the Frontage Road as well.
When was that just first approved? You know, was it this board, well, not this board, the previous?
Previous board.
May I have two prays?
Second. All those opposed?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Item Eight P, that's a conditional use for Chris Evans at 804 North Monroe Street.
Okay. Well, if Chris is here, but he is seeking a conditional use to operate a short-term, a short-term rental unit at this location. Uh, you'll recognize this location, uh, last year, uh, he came before this Board, or the previous Board, to, uh, uh, repaint the house there on, uh, on, uh, North Monroe, and this is the way it looks today. Uh, Section 1005 gives you the, uh, minimum requirements to grant a conditional use, uh, the applicant meets the requirements of our short-term rental regulations on there, the notice of public hearing was published, the notice was sent to the owners and tenants within five hundred feet, as required by our, uh, short-term, uh, regula, uh, unit regulations, and the property was posted as required by ordinance as well as put on our website. The, again, this is a short-term, uh, rental unit.
Any feedback from the sign or notices?
No, no feedback from the sign.
May I have two prays?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
It looks so much better.
I think it really does look so much better, what, how many is that, boy?
I think it's three.
And, and? There was a, a couple of them already.
I'm sorry, I said, Chris Evans has, I think, uh, two, and then Farrah did one, but I think it's being used, uh, as a regular rental now, who moved in, is stayed, pretty well staying in there now.
All right, Item Eight Q, this will be an amendment to the City of Clinton zoning ordinance as a change to liquor stores. Roy Edwards, please, for this.
Yeah, thank you. The, uh, uh, previous Board had, did ask that we go ahead and, uh, take care of, uh, this liquor stores, uh, uh, up until now, uh, have been allowed in any commercial district, well, other than the professional commercial type district, but C2, general commercial, and other commercial, it's allowed outright without, uh, conditional use. Uh, so what this will do is it'll make it a conditional use in C2, which will, uh, therefore make it conditional uses in the, uh, other commercial districts as well, uh, on there. Uh, if this is approved, it will take thirty days to, uh, before it will become effective.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Item Eight P, uh, resolution for unkept property located at 505 West Lakeview Drive.
This is the property this morning, you can see it, the, the front has been cut, I'm not so sure, uh, maybe a neighbor is not cutting, uh, the yard, you'll see. If you look down the side, you can see they did a little down the side there, but it's, it's been, uh, considerably higher than this, uh, in the, uh, past. Uh, this is going through the, uh, gate there to the right, you've got, uh, neighbors on both sides, and then in the rear also that, uh, are seeing this. That's a pool in the back, uh, the, uh, and then two inoperable vehicles as well. The, uh, we, uh, had worked this, or had been working it to get the grass cut and things like that, but, uh, uh, our Police Department has, uh, gone through on a welfare check, and the house is in bad shape as it is, didn't see anyone there. Uh, looking at the tax rolls, the taxes haven't been paid since twenty-two, uh, on this one, that's not a part of the estate inventory yet, uh, but it is, uh, uh, they are behind right now on it. We've had no contact with the, uh, owner, we, but certified mail is required by state statutes, and, uh, the, it's just not had any response. Uh, plus, uh, put the, uh, signage on the, uh, exit, uh, house, uh, and at City Hall.
So, if you have a map, so we can see where that is, I don't recognize that house, I don't.
It's, it's near the corner post in Lakeview.
Okay.
You've got the corner house, and it's, it's between, uh, the next one to the south.
Okay.
Uh, on there, it's, uh.
May I have two prays?
Second. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
And your Royal. All right, we have just a few important items to cover, uh, Item Nine A is the approval for Clinton Police Department, the part-time dispatcher, Caitlin Dindley, to full-time dispatcher, uh, do I have any discussion or motion?
Uh, make a motion, we approve nine A through E.
Okay, I'm gonna take them individually, I think that's.
Oh, you are?
The way we should have been doing it, I could have made that comment, but.
Okay, uh, move to approve.
Okay, all right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor? All those opposed? All right, motion carries. Item Nine B, approval for Clinton Police Department to hire Timothy Jackson as the dispatcher. Please approve, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. A approval for the Parkland Recreation Department to hire ground technician, uh, Demarian Newell.
May I have two prays?
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Second.
Think you had my second. I thought this was my first one. Item 9D, Approval to hire part-time summer worker Barrett Watson for the Parks and Recreation Department.
Move to approve. Second.
All those in favor? All those in favor, opposed? Motion carries. Item E, Approval to hire one maintenance worker contingent on the results of the MEA drug test for the Public Works Department.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. Is there any other business to come before the board tonight?
Move to adjourn.
No.
Second.
All those in favor? All those opposed?